Call this meeting to session. Can we have the roll?
Tyler Robinson.
Here.
Greg Strike.
Here.
Danielle Bailey.
Here.
Andres Spinelli.
Here.
Seth Anderson.
Here.
Brian Looney.
Here.
Jared Gardner.
Here.
Thank you. And I don't believe we have any minutes, so starting off with disclosures. Commissioner Gardner?
Just that I was absent for cases 2019-004, 0047, and 0048, and I will not be participating in the resolutions on those cases.
Thank you. Commissioner Robinson?
Yeah, in the matter of case 2019-48, I was recused, so I will not be voting from resolution 2019-008.
And Commissioner Strike?
Yes, no disclosures.
Commissioner Looney?
Yes, like last week, I'd like to disclose that my company is involved with public hearing cases two and three, so I'm going to recuse myself from those cases.
Commissioner Spinelli?
Yeah, I was recused from case 2019-47 and will not be participating in resolution 2019-7.
Commissioner Anderson?
None.
And I also have no disclosures. Moving on to the consent agenda. Sorry, it's... Oh. Moving on to the consent agenda, do we have enough votes for this? Okay. Is there any objection to the consent agenda or any wish to remove any items for the consent agenda? Seeing no one wishing to remove, any objections to approval of the consent agenda? Consent agenda is approved. And then, I believe, Commissioner Strike, where are you going to?
Yes, a motion here on the floor to, to, let's see, I probably hit the motion. On the floor, on the, we've got two public hearing motions, hearings here this evening, case number 2018-0026 and case S12479. I would move to combine both of these public hearing.
And is there a second? Second by Commissioner Robinson, any discussion? Any opposed? Seeing none opposed, that is approved. Those two items will be combined. And moving on to our first public hearing item, can we hear the report from staff? Oh, sorry, first I have to read the public hearing process. Thank you. For those who are wishing to testify, this is the process for public hearings. The procedure by which the public may speak to the commission at its meeting is as follows. After the staff presentation is complete on public hearing items, the chair will ask for public testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the commission rules of procedure. Petitioners, including all or his or her representatives, will receive 10 minutes. Part of their time may be reserved for rebuttal. Representatives of groups, such as community councils or PTAs, will receive five minutes. Individuals will receive three minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. An individual may have appeal rights relating to the action in the planning and zoning commission takes, except the commission's recommendations to the assembly, which are not appealable. Appeals must be filed with the clerk's office within 20 days after the approval of the planning and zoning commission of the resolution, which is the commission's final decision. A fee for the appeal is required at the time of filing. And for the second hearing on the agenda, because we're combining two cases, petitioners will receive 20 minutes, and they may reserve part of the time for rebuttal. Representatives will receive 10 minutes, and individuals can receive six minutes. Thank you. Staff, can we hear the report?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Case 2019-0063, this is a request for a new conditional use that would allow a parking lot as a principal use in the R3 mixed residential zoning district. The subject lot is Lot 3, Wharton subdivision, located on West 24th Avenue, generally north of West Fireweed Lane and east of Eureka Street. The applicant owns abouting lots 4, 5, and 6 of the Wharton subdivision. All four lots are identified in Figure 1 of the staff report. Lots 5 and 6 are in the B3 general business zoning district, while Lot 4 and the subject lot, Lot 3, are located in the R3 mixed residential zoning district. The proposed parking lot consists of 10 parking spaces that would provide additional parking for the applicant's business, OMG Nails, on Lot 6. Because West 24th Avenue is an unimproved local street, access to the proposed parking lot would be provided via existing access points on West Fireweed Lane. The proposed site plan is available in the application. The proposed parking lot would also provide additional parking for the eventual redevelopment of Lot 5. The applicant's stated intent is to demolish the residential structure on Lot 5, 549 West Fireweed, and replace it with a mixed-use building. For agency comments, MOA Traffic noted that direct vehicular access to West 24th Avenue should be prohibited. This recommendation will be retained as a condition of approval for this conditional use request. Traffic also recommended several changes to the site plan in order for it to meet all requirements of AMC 2107. These are outlined in the staff packet on Pages 3 and 4, and are also included as conditions of approval. No public comments, no comments received from the public, and there are no objections to the conditional use application at the public meeting held at the North Star Community Council. For the approval criteria, the planning and zoning commission may approve a conditional use application if, in the judgment of the commission, all of the following criteria have been met in all material matters. One, the proposed use is consistent with the comprehensive plan and all applicable provisions as title and applicable state and federal regulations. This criteria is met. Per the 2040 land use plan, the entirety of the subject lot and the development site fall under the Main Street corridor land use designation. The subject lot and site are also less than a quarter mile away from the transit corridors on Arctic Boulevard and C Street, and therefore are included within the transit supportive development growth supporting feature. The proposed parking lot will utilize existing curb cuts on West Fireweed Lane as intended to support a business and a potential mixed-use development that are typical of the smaller scale, neighborhood-savoring uses that are envisioned for the Main Street corridor designation. In addition, the proposed parking lot will be shared between two uses and is located behind those uses, which advances the shared infill design principles that the Main Street corridor designation references. The proposed parking lot is also intended to be shared between two lots, as stated, and will not create new vehicular access points from West Fireweed Lane. Considering this context, the conditional use would result in the type of compact shared parking facility that is desirable on a corridor that is located within the transit supportive development growth supporting feature. Two, the proposed use is consistent with the purpose and intent of the zoning district in which it is located, including any district-specific standards set forth in Chapter 2104. This criteria is met. The R3 mixed residential district is intended to accommodate residential uses. The proposed parking lot is intended to serve an existing commercial use and is therefore not entirely consistent with the residential purpose of the underlying R3 zoning district. However, neither Table 2105-1, Table of Lot Uses, nor the use specific standards or definitions in 2105-050i.2 differentiate between conditionally allowed parking lots that serve residential uses and conditionally allowed parking lots that serve commercial uses. Therefore, the proposed use can be considered consistent with the purpose and intent of the underlying zoning district. Three, the proposed use is consistent with any applicable use-specific standards set forth in Chapter 2105. This criteria is met. Use specific standards for a parking lot as a principal use require that such parking lots be designed in accordance with 2107-090H Parking Loading and Facility Design Standards and 2107-08OE2 Parking Lot Landscaping. The proposed site plan for the conditional use meets the requirements of 2107-08OE2 and will meet 2107-090H when the conditions recommended in the staff report are applied. Four, the site, size, dimensions, shape, location, topography are adequate for the needs of the proposed use and any mitigation needed to address potential impacts. This criteria is met. The site is large enough to accommodate the proposed use in addition to the pedestrian walkway and required landscaping, and the impacts are anticipated to be addressed, as stated above. The proposed use will not alter the character of the surrounding area in a manner in which substantially limits, impairs, or prevents the use of surrounding properties for the permitted uses listed in the underlying zoning district. This criteria is also met. The development of a relatively small parking lot as a principal use, landscaped and consisting of 10 or fewer parking spaces, will not impact the ability of surrounding properties to implement any permitted uses. Six, the proposed use is compatible with uses allowed on adjacent properties in terms of its scale, site, design, operating characteristics, hours of operation, traffic generation, lighting, noise, odor, dust, and other external impacts. This criteria is met. The hours of operation for the business on Lot 6 are 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. daily. As a result, the proposed parking lot will not see significant use or generate noise in usually early or late times of day. Consisting of 10 or fewer spaces, the proposed parking lot is also relatively small and will be built to a scale that is compatible with its surroundings. The lighting plan that is recommended to be required will ensure that lighting impacts are minimized. Seven, this criteria, any significant adverse impacts anticipated to result from the use will be mitigated or offset to the maximum extent feasible. This criteria is met. With the recommended conditions, the proposed site plan for the conditional use will mitigate potential adverse impacts to the surrounding commercial and residential properties. Eight, the proposed use is appropriately located with respect to the transportation system, including but not limited to existing and/or planned street designations and improvements, street capacity, access to collectors or arterials, connectivity, off-site parking impacts, transit availability, impacts on pedestrian bicycle and transit circulation, and safety for all modes. This criteria is met. The proposed use will stabilize existing, will utilize existing curb cuts on West Fireweed Lane for access. It is possible that the increase in parking availability will result in increased vehicle use of that access point. However, only 10 or fewer additional parking spaces are proposed to be provided, and as such, the increase in vehicles using the access point is not likely to be significant. Nine, the proposed use is appropriately located with respect to existing and/or planned water supply, fire, and police protection, wastewater disposal, stormwater disposal, and similar facilities and services. This criteria is met. The site is located within the Anchorage Roads and Drainage Service area, the Building Service area, and the Police and Fire Service areas. Public water and sewer service is available at the petition site, and the applicant expects to store snow off-site through a snow removal agreement. With that being said, the department recommends approval of the conditional use, subject to the conditions on Page 8 of the staff packet. I would also note that before you, you have a floor amendment for case, for this case. In the staff packet, you may have noticed on Page 8, the verbiage incorrectly identifies the, or recommends the conditional use for denial, but given that all the criteria have been met, as we just went over, the, it was intended that the department recommend approval of the conditional use. So, a floor amendment is there with recommended change, recommended change to Page 8, first paragraph. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Strike?
Yes, thank you through the chair. Thank you, and through the chair. You've identified landscaping on Number 3, 4, and 5. You've identified the lighting requirement on 6, and as part of the recommendation, Number 3 recommendation is provide a lighting plan and obtain the traffic department's approval. Should one of the requirements also be the approval and the review of the landscaping I note that on Number 3, you referenced the standards that are to be met, but I don't see it as a department recommendation for inclusion, like you did the lighting plan, which follows the same code.
Right, so we, the department deems that, or believes that the landscaping plan that would go through the land use approval process for the land use permit, that that process would be sufficient, and that the planning department doesn't need to see the landscape plan.
But they do need to see the lighting plan.
Correct. The lighting plan has a bit more, so the landscaping standards are laid out in exact in detail in Title 21, whereas the lighting standards are not. So, there's a little bit more discretion there that the planning department would like to take a look at.
So, I guess what I'm looking for, there is a process, I just want assurances that the landscaping plan is still required, it's going to be reviewed before they can proceed, correct?
Yes, definitely.
That's all I need.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Robinson?
Thank you, through the chair. Mr. Hodges, the area on the 2040 land use plan that's designated for Main Street corridor extends this entire block, is that correct, between Wharton Mobile Home Park Court and Eureka Street, all the way to 24th? Sort of takes care of that, that block, if you will?
Yes, I believe that's correct.
And so, do you think, without obviously a rezoning case in front of you, but do you think that likely supports an eventual rezoning, or would support at least the rezoning applications of these lots in the future, from R3 to B3 with that designation in the land use plan? May be an indication to me, as a commissioner, that that would be what the intent would be.
Sorry, were you asking if the department would support that?
Yeah, without sort of looking at additional things, but if this was a rezoning case, and if that was the recently approved land use designation, do you think the department would approve a rezoning of this lot?
Without going through the case with detail and eye towards that question, I wouldn't be able to give an answer to that right now.
So, let me ask you this. If, if in fact, it went through later to be rezoned, what would happen with the conditional use permit, since now that lot would be governed by a new zoning district? Would the conditional use permit go away? In other words, the reason that there's a conditional use permit is because it's R3, but if in the future it's rezoned to B3, what happens with that CUP? Does it, does it just sort of vanish?
So, the CUP would be on file with the property indefinitely. There is no expiration date proposed, but if it's a different zoning district, then it would no longer apply to that property. It would not be, it would not be considered, it would not be, wouldn't be considered in land use permits or building permits.
That's what I thought. And so, that leads me to kind of where I wanted to get to, which is, I find it interesting that the traffic engineer is, as a condition of this conditional use, prohibiting access to 24th Avenue, and yet, this area as a transit corridor, the whole point is to minimize and eliminate curb cuts along a transit corridor. So, if you were looking at that block holistically, and if you had unified ownership, it was very, it would be very likely, if the whole thing was owned by one person, that you actually wouldn't be allowed to have any access to fireweed. You'd have to come out on the side streets, or the rear street, or whatever. So, my question for you is, what would happen to this prohibition from accessing 24th in the future? If we're thinking about this as a land use decision for 20, 30, 40 years, eventually, if we want to create a transit corridor, we want, we don't want the access on fireweed. And in fact, what we're doing is the exact opposite of what our other policies say we should do, by require, by blocking the back alley. So, how do we reconcile that?
So, from MOA Traffic, one of the primary reasons that that access was being prohibited was because the entire length of 24th is unimproved, so it's essentially, I don't believe it's paved, actually. So, it's a very, it's an unimproved roadway that is not designed to handle any kind of additional traffic. And if in the future, the lot behind it was to be developed, and that road is to be improved, or, you know, the neighborhood, we were to see substantial investments and improvements, then, not speaking for the traffic department, but I could see potentially that access being restored.
So, I just, that's what I want to make, I want to make sure that this petitioner wouldn't have to go back and eliminate a conditional use permit in the future, if in fact, they rezone the property.
I don't know if I can give a final answer on that right now, but I don't believe that the prohibition would apply if it was a new zoning district.
Thank you.
Commissioner Looney?
Yes, actually, I have a question about the department recommendation Number 5, where you're tying, you're requiring a, really a shared parking agreement with, between Lot 3 and 5. I realize that the application talked about the future plans to, I guess, demolish the building on Lot 5, but does this parking lot require that agreement at that point? Or is that something that could be handled at that time?
The applicant may be able to speak further to that, but my understanding is that the two, so the potential use, potential mixed use on the northwest corner of the property, I believe, would have the potential of a shared parking with the existing use on Lot 6, which is commercial. So, the idea is to ensure that those, that shared parking does come about, and that those parking lots are shared. The applicant, does that answer your question?
Really, I guess the question is, I realize that's probably the future plan, but is, does this improvement, is it tied to that? I mean, if that recommendation Number 5 were to go away, you're still compliance with Title 21, aren't we?
Yes, there's no question of Title 21 compliance in that condition. It's just recording that those two lots will be shared, that the lots will be shared between the two uses, which is a desirable goal for the comprehensive plan.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? All right, seeing none, can we hear from the petitioner? Please state your name for the record, and let us know if you'd like to reserve any time for rebuttal.
Yeah, hi, my name's Ron Thompson, representing OMG Nails on this conditional use. I think the talk kind of let everybody know exactly what was going on. I think our biggest concern was the recommended denial, but I think he cleared that up when he called me today and said it was really recommended approval. The other question I had was exactly what Mr. Looney had, and that was, the shared parking agreement's part of when we build on Lot 5, not prior to, so I agree, I don't think it should be a condition on the conditional use, but it's a requirement that we use those for, if we're going to build on Lot 5 later. So, it handles that under the building permit, or under the process of developing Lot 5. So, I mean, I think it doesn't need to be there, I don't think it affects it, but at the same time, we will be doing that, because we are going to be doing an agreement, but I agree, it shouldn't be part of the conditional use conditions itself. But other than that, I think that everybody, it's pretty straightforward. We have a business that's trying to develop and do the things that the neighborhood wants. They've been around, talked with the neighborhood. We talked with the city quite a bit. We did want to, we did actually want to access 24th, but were prevented pretty hardcore. I mean, even if we said we would improve it, they said no, so it didn't matter, it wasn't an improvement issue, it was no because of cut-through traffic at the present time, because it would be fireweed to a residential street. That's the whole reason for it. So, the residential, or the Main Street corridor later, that, it may solve it when they get rid of fireweed access ingress and egress, but we had to do it here, and we changed our whole design based upon them denying moving forward with access through 24th at the present time. It cut down the number of parking we could do and all types of things, but it is what it is. We felt that we could still work with the 9, 10 parking spots that are there, so.
Commissioner Robinson?
Through the chair, yeah, I'm curious, what, you know how this works, obviously, if you decided to take access onto 24th Avenue, there would be the chance that the muni would ask you, because it's an entitlement, to make some improvements to that probably asphalt, right? Were you prepared to do that?
We asked the question, but it didn't matter, so we didn't really venture, I didn't really go back to the owners, because there was no possibility. They would not let us move forward and even discuss the fact of accessing 24th, until we made the access on fireweed go away, and that just couldn't really happen in this situation.
Say they wanted one or the other, if you're, not both.
Correct. And, I mean, you can see where the, the traffic lanes and the onsite maneuvering couldn't be done from 24th alone. So, it really just impacted us to where we had one option, and so, that's the option that we went down, and it's still a number that works for the owners, and so, they felt strongly that it's worth going forward without accessing it on 24th. And you can see, one of the conditions is to take one more parking spot away, to do a dead-end alley and take that away, but, and it is what it is, that's a condition that we'll have to deal with, too.
So, and just if I may, one more question. The, I mean, you mentioned that you'd be okay with the, with the shared parking thing, if it stuck, but, but, I mean, what if, what if you can't make the development happen that you want to make happen, and then you have to go through and eliminate the, I mean, why not just deal with it at the?
I would tend to take it out, I want to, but I don't want to hold this operation of getting approval for conditional use up as a delay because of that, but, I mean, I agree, all the plans in the world move forward, but sometimes they stop, and you don't know. So, you don't want a condition that you shouldn't have on yourself, which is, that condition is kind of over and above what the code says we should have on us at this time.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Commissioner Gardner?
Thank you. Just a quick question to clarify a part of the record I wasn't clear on, and that relates to the North Star Community Council's approval. I think I saw in the staff packet that there were no comments from there, but I see, I think in the application...
Actually, it was overwhelming support. I mean...
Yeah, okay. Were the minutes included in your application? Because I just didn't, I didn't see them, I was wondering if I missed them.
I believe they were added, when they finally came out, I think they were added. I don't remember 100%, I do a few of these, so.
But they were in approval?
Yeah, it was, yeah. Actually, 90% of the people thanked the owners for doing what they're doing, because they all use her shop for their nails, so it was, I think she was shocked at how many people in the community already knew that she was there, what she had done, and what they provide. And so, it was really a, really positive and pretty nice meeting, out of many, out of many community council meetings that I have attended, it was completely overwhelming support.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Looney?
Actually, maybe it's more like technical detail, but I notice one of the recommendations is to eliminate parking space 1, at the, I guess, very north end of the parking lot, for a turnaround, I assume, but like a hammerhead design, wouldn't it be much easier to eliminate parking space 2, so the person could go in and curve when he comes back out?
Well, if you look in the plan, there's an extended end of the way. So, the last parking spot, we had extended to where you could back out and go in, because that's typically what we do in a lot of places, but technically, technically, it is a dead end, and technically, you have to have a five-foot pavement extension past the end, so we have that, if you look at it, it goes in toward the landscaping already, so the last spot would be the right one to probably eliminate, but either one could be...
I do see the extension. I guess I must not be that good of a driver to be able to make that work, but I'll practice that. Thank you.
I mean, that's typically what onsite maneuvering requires us, is a five feet past the, the end of the last stall, so that's kind of what showed up.
Mr. Hodges?
Yes, I just wanted to note that on Page 18, the meeting minutes from the community council are included.
Thank you. All right.
And yeah, I'll take rebuttal if there is, in a little...
Oh, there's one more question. Commissioner Looney?
One more thought, I guess, I guess I hadn't asked, but so, your request, your plan has 10 spaces, and of course, the recommendations are nine. Is that going to impact your proposed development on Lot 5? The fact that you only have nine rather than 10?
We have to meet code, and so, at this case, I think that randy in traffic has the determination that a dead-end aisle requires that last space turnaround, so it will have to work, will have to make it work.
Okay.
And Mr. Hodges?
Thank you. One last, so per the, for condition 5, the shared parking agreement, I did include that primarily because the applicant stated in their application that lots 5 and 6 are intended, they intend to share parking, and that rationale is folded into the approval criteria. So, essentially, that approval criterion is holding the applicant to that standard, that they have mentioned that they will be pursuing themselves, and the, partially, the fact that those lots are sharing parking does go some way in addressing the approval criteria, and so that's why it's in the packet.
Thank you. And you have eight minutes left for rebuttal. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on this matter? Seeing no members of the public wishing to speak, you have eight minutes left for rebuttal. And what is the will of the body? Commissioner Robinson?
Yes, in the matter of case 2019-63, conditional use for parking lot as a principal use in the R3 mixed residential district, I move that we approve, we approve the case in the affirmative, so it's a slight change from how it's worded, with the conditions provided on Page 8 of the staff packet.
Seconded by Commissioner Anderson, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yeah, I would, I would entertain a motion to remove Number 5. I don't believe that this is the appropriate time to do that, but I wanted to leave that up for the discussion in the body, but generally speaking, you know, what I believe is that we've recently passed a land use plan that, that actually sort of designates and looked for places where we had commercial and resi- and residential almost split block areas that could more easily be, you know, sort of turned into cohesive development, and I think that's what we have here today. So, the fact that this petitioner has to come forward with a conditional use permit, you know, frankly, if we were doing area-wide rezonings like, like I thought we should do, I think it would be cleaned up for them and they wouldn't even have to do it, and what we'd be seeing is sort of replating exercises and that instead of, instead of this exercise. I believe that if anything, this kind of interim unknown creates a little bit of uncertainty where I think the longer term solution is to get cars off of, the curb cuts off of fireweed and actually access West 24th like an alley, and access those side streets like an alley, and look at this like a, like a cohesive commercial district. So, I find that the conditional use permits, or the conditional, the approval criteria is met through the 2040 land use plan, through what is commonly seen in all other parts of town where we have these kind of split zoning districts. So, this is really, I believe it's a cleaning up. I think West 24th provides a buffer from this area to the residential area to the north, and by the way, that area is, is zoned R4, so it's really intended to be high density, much higher density than what it is today. I think all the other criteria is met, I'll be supporting the, the motion.
Commissioner Looney?
Yes, I agree with Commissioner Robinson, so, to get the traffic off fireweed, and maybe if the, it's not really a condition of approval as far as no access on 24th Avenue, but if it were to say something like, no access onto 24th Avenue until that street is improved, that would be fine, but like I say, it's, it's not currently a condition, it's more just what the, what the petitioner's plan does not have access on that road because they were led to believe they weren't allowed to have it. But I'm with Commissioner Robinson in that we need to move towards getting rid of those curb cuts, the pedestrians hate those things, so it's, and define it in those side streets. Whether we can make a change here or not, I don't know, we'll see.
Commissioner Robinson?
So, if I may, so is, is your view, Commissioner Looney, that, that actually, nothing in this CUP actually prevents, is it because we're actually cementing a site plan with this conditional use? Or what is it in the recommendations that actually prevent it in the future?
I know, actually, first I thought it'd be part of, one of the recommended, recommended conditions, but it's really more a comment from the municipal traffic engineer that shall not have access on 24th Avenue, but I don't really see it as a department recommendation, other than the fact that the site plan that's going to be approved does not have access to 24th Avenue.
So, should we clarify? And I would kind of defer to staff to clarify, and if, if staff wants to clarify it, I would, I would favor some language like you just proposed, which is sort of, there's an interim, and then there's a long-term desire.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Mr. Hodges, can you comment on that matter?
Certainly, so, the Municipal Municipal Traffic Department would need to sign off on, on the project, and given that all, all discussions to date have revolved around the prohibition on access to West 24th for this particular development, I, for approval would not, the traffic department would not be approving a site plan that attempted access from West 24th. As the applicant stated, you know, there's sort of an either/or, either retaining the fireweed access or accessing only off of 24th, I think there could be, it wouldn't hurt if the commission had language to, added language to prohibit explicitly in the conditions of approval, access to West 24th.
Commissioner Spinelli?
Yes, through the Chair, question for staff. So, do you think, is this gravel alley similar to most gravel alleys, or is it worse than most gravel alleys?
Are you referring to West 24th?
Yes.
So, wouldn't, it's not actually an alley, I don't believe, it's, it's a local street, so.
Okay, well, so how, how is it constructed, I guess? About 20 feet wide gravel?
I'm actually uncertain of the width, if the applicant may have that information.
It doesn't meet local street width requirements for the, so it's more like an alley, but it is a street, and it's all gravel at this time. So, I think the right of way is only like 24 foot wide, if I remember right. So, it's, it's very, even though it, even though it's a street, it's not.
And then, again, for staff, so you're saying that even if the 2040 plan might direct traffic to this road, and if the planning and zoning commission were to allow traffic to access this road, that you don't think the traffic engineer still wouldn't approve it?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Robinson?
Just to be clear, is, is number two C the prohibition from West 24th? Is that, is that what that means? No, that would be north end, that's, but where, where in our action are we actually saying you can't have access to West 24th? I just don't see it.
It's not in the conditions of approval, you're correct.
So, it would just be something that would come up during the building permit process?
Correct, the land use approval, the land use permit and the building permit process because traffic would have to sign off on it.
Okay, well, then I'm comfortable with that, because that means that could be renegotiated with changing conditions.
Yeah, I would also add that it might be read in into number two, that it shall conform to the submitted application narrative and plans on file with the planning department. Commissioner Gardner?
Is that right? That raises a question for me then. I think I was comfortable as well with the comment that Commissioner Robinson made, that to the extent it's in the discretion of, of, of traffic, that if conditions change, then there's a possibility of that access point changing in the future. But if, if two is limiting it exactly to the current plans, then I guess I'm a little uncomfortable with that rigidity in this, and would entertain a possibility to loosen that up a little bit, give the discretion to traffic.
Yeah, I would support that, in that maybe if we could amend the conditions and allow that connection when the road is improved or something.
Unless there's a motion for amendment, you still have the motion as stands?
If, I think I heard an amendment to the motion, but if, if I could, Mr. Looney, can you maybe, I think you were trying to do that?
I'll do my best, how's that? So, I'd like to amend your main motion, actually, with two items. One is to remove the department recommendation number five, which requires the shared parking agreement, and also like to include a, I'm not sure if I want to call it a condition, someone has to help me here, include a finding that the, the denial of access on the 24th Avenue, or we'll say, access on the 24th Avenue may be allowed in the future when that roadway is improved. Help me out, how's that sound?
There is a motion on the floor to amend, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Spinelli. Anybody wishing to speak to that motion? I do not see anyone in the queue. I actually have a question for the petitioner. Would they be amenable to the, to that amendment?
Of course, I mean, at the beginning, if the, if everything worked out, we could rearrange the parking plan at some point, probably not immediately, but in the future, without having to come back to the conditional amendment, conditional use, we would absolutely entertain that, because right now, the rigidity of what the plan says and not having that language, we would not be able to just do it in the future until such time that the conditional use was no longer needed, or it was rezoned, or all of those above, but, but I think that we would definitely like that opportunity.
Thank you, Commissioner Strick?
Yes, through the Chair, I'd like to seek clarity on the comment that Mr. Looney made regarding a finding. I don't believe it's a finding during the motion, I think it needs to be specifically moved as part of it. So, I just want to clarify the wording that, I'm going to put words in his mouth, that he didn't intend to say finding.
I definitely agree, so it's a, what I'm grasping for, it's not really a condition, so it's more like a.
Part of the recommendation.
And it really, it kind of ties to the recommendation number two, as far as the, the submitted plan that was, this comment that's referred to and note to, that that plan can in the future have connectivity to 24th Avenue if that roadway is improved.
So, to put words again, you're making a motion to clarifying the intent of this commission and voting in the affirmative what that desire is?
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner?
So, I don't know where my comment falls in the procedural posture of where we are here, but it occurs to me, and, and I don't know if we've settled on precise language for this particular proposed amendment or not, but it could be a new subsection D to paragraph two, recommendation number two, in other words, a further exception to conforming to the submitted application narrative and plans on file. And again, I don't know if this would need to be an additional motion, or maybe this is all part of the discussion of the exact language, but, but I would suggest.
It could be a friendly amendment.
A friendly amendment, yeah, to include not just, so it would be an exception to that, that would allow for access to 24th Avenue, I think we could say if the roadway is approved, but I would also think it might be helpful to include a requirement that traffic sign off on it, perhaps.
So, it's, just to interject, it sounds like we still need a little more clarification on how this amendment is going to be formally worded. Is there anyone willing to take an official crack at that? Commissioner Robinson?
Well, what I was going to say, I would really like to divide the question, if that's possible, and deal with the first part of the amendment, which has to do with elimination of number five, if, if we could, if we, and I don't know if I can amend this amendment to the, to the, to the motion, Laurie, if I could, we could just divide, divide it, otherwise, we'd have to ask Mr. Looney to withdraw it and resubmit it one at a time.
Commissioner Looney, will you accept to separating out this and only dealing with item number five? Commissioner Looney?
Yes.
And Commissioner Spinelli, would you still second that motion?
Yes.
All right, so, as it currently stands, we have a motion to amend the approval of which would remove department recommendation number five. Would anyone else wish to speak on that motion before a vote? I see no one wishing to speak, call for a vote. That motion passes. Is there anyone that would like to make an additional motion to amend the, the underlying motion?
So, did we split them up, or we just did, we just did one, and now we have another?
We just did item number five, and if there is someone who would still like to discuss what the commission seems to be edging towards, the idea of removing, not removing, but revising that requirement of no access on 24th. I think that is what it sounds as though the body is leaning towards.
Yeah, I can make, I can make a motion. And so, I would move to, I guess, amend department recommendation number two to add a subsection D that would state, access shall be available onto 24th Avenue, I would just say, if the, if the traffic department approves it and concludes that it's appropriate.
And Commissioner Strick, are you seconding that motion? Anyone wishing to speak on that motion? Commissioner Robinson?
Yeah, I'd just like a clear finding that we, the reason why we, the reason that I'm going to support this amendment to the motion is because at long term, it seems like that is the most conducive to creating an actual transit supportive development corridor along fireweed lane.
Commissioner Looney?
I definitely will support it too, and it's much more eloquently said than I did, but I feel confident that the traffic department will support access to 24th Avenue when that road is developed and when, when they get in the mode of trying to minimize connections off fireweed, which is the long-term goal. So, I think it's a good way to craft it, so it's tied to their approval.
I too will be supporting this motion to amend. I think it is a good decision to start looking more long-term on what the city is going to be looking like, and this fits with the 2040 land use plan, it fits with the end goal of what we want to see our city looking like, so I think removing that obstacle from the petitioners along the way will do a good part to make that change actually happen. Call for a vote. And that motion passes. Would anyone like to speak to the underlying motion? Commissioner Strick?
And I think I'd like to take this opportunity to clarify as far as one of the findings here too, that the amendments that we've made here are intended to resolve what we foresaw as potential unintended consequences of the conditional use, so that the petitioner wasn't blocked and had flexibility as they moved forward. And so, part of this was cleaning up the potential for unintended consequences as we move forward. Thank you.
Commissioner Gardner?
I would just note that we heard testimony that there was strong support from the North Star Community Council, and also with respect to approval criteria number five, I think, to me, you know, if we're looking at this through the narrower lens of the conditional use permit, I think it's relevant that the, that the property that is, I guess, two lots to the east has this exact same type of structure with a, a commercial building up front, and then a parking lot and the lot behind it.
Commissioner Anderson?
Just like to restate for the main motion, that the 2040 land use plan does designate this area as the main street corridor, and this conditional use as a parking area supports using the existing properties and the continued use as a commercial, commercial business within that corridor.
And call for a vote. And that motion passes. Thank you. And Commissioner Looney, I believe you're done for the day. Moving on to case 2018-0026 and S12479, can we hear from staff?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Municipality of Anchorage Project Management Engineering Department, PMNE, is requesting a review of the design study report, DSR, for the West 32nd Avenue and East 33rd Avenue Upgrades Project in accordance with the 2103190 Street and Trail Review. The project team is seeking planning and zoning commission approval for, for proposed upgrades to the streets, signals, utilities, and lighting along the approximately 1.7-mile quarter highlighted in figure one of the staff report. There is a specific focus on improving bicycle and pedestrian mobility along the corridor by providing continuous non-motivated route from Spinard Road to the Old Seward Highway. A concept report for this project was provided and discussed at the October 2nd, 2017 Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. As part of this DSR, the project team is requesting a variance represented in case S12479 being heard concurrently from the requirement in 2107060E2B to provide sidewalks on both sides of the street on North Star Street. Looking at the variance request, in order for the preferred alternatives in the DSR to be approved as written, the requested variance must be considered first. As a decision-making body for the associated DSR, the Planning and Zoning Commission may also serve as a decision-making body for the variance. Looking at the variance standards for providing sidewalks on only one side of the street, A, there are special circumstances or conditions affecting the property such that a strict application of the provisions of the subdivision regulations would be clearly impractical, unreasonable, or undesirable to the general public. Standard is met. North Star Street has only 30 feet of right of way, and the project team is proposing to acquire an additional eight feet of right of way. eight feet of right-of-way from the abutting Anchorage Water and Waste Water Utility, AWU Lot to the east. Any additional right-of-way acquisition would be impractical due to the existence of a multifamily building only five feet to the west of the existing right-of-way, and due to impacts to parking and vehicle circulation on the AWU Lot if more than eight feet of additional right-of-ways were acquired. B, the granting of this specific variance will not be detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to other property in the area in which such property is situated. The standard is met. As shown in figure three, the proposed cross-section will provide a 10-foot pathway for pedestrians and bicyclists. The proposed facility is sufficient to separate non-motorized traffic from the low-vehicle volumes on North Star Street. In addition, a pathway on the east side of the street is advantageous, and it provides direct continuity between North Star Street and the proposed pathway that continues eastward. C, such variance will not have the effect of nullifying the intent and purpose of the subdivision regulations or the comprehensive plan of the municipality. The standard is met. The proposed pathway on North Star Street conforms to the comprehensive plan and governing Title 21 regulations by providing a safe, convenient, non-motorized facility that meets existing municipal design standards. D, undue hardship would result from strict compliance with specific provisions or requirements of the subdivision regulations. The applicant may supplement the form with the supporting documents. The standard is met. Requiring sidewalks on both sides of North Star Street would necessitate further right-of-way acquisitions, which would result in negative impacts to AWU's parking facilities and the abutting multifamily building. Since an adequate facility can be built on one side of the street without these impacts, undue hardship would result from requiring further right-of-way acquisitions. And in code, additional considerations for AMC 2107060E2G, the decision-making body must also consider the following. One, site conditions and the potential for significant negative impacts on the national environment. There are no anticipated environmental impacts, and site conditions are constrained by a narrow right-of-way that is currently, is directly abated by an existing multifamily building and an AWU parking facility. Two, the need to maintain and improve sidewalk continuity. The proposed pathway on North Star Street will provide adequate continuity to and from West 30th Avenue and West 32nd Avenue. Three, evidence that a sidewalk would decrease pedestrian safety. There is no evidence for or expectation of decreased pedestrian safety in either scenario. Four, extensive public testimony offering rational arguments against sidewalks. There has been no testimony to date regarding the provision of sidewalks on North Star Street. Five, available to even alternate trail system. There is an alternative trail system nearby. Six, vehicular speeds and pedestrian safety. Per figure five in the staff report, 85th percentile of vehicle speeds are at or below 23 to 27 miles per hour on North Star Street. These low speeds are beneficial to pedestrian safety as described in detail on page 53 of the DSR. So what we'll do is go through, so those were the standards for the variance, and we'll now proceed to case 20180026, the main design study report. And reviewing that report, the DSR for this project contains detailed information on the commission review items required in 2103190B4I through 13, and the memorandum accompanying the DSR cites where further information on each item can be found within it. The project study area has a lower volume, lower speed midtown corridor with wide bi-directional streets and minimal pedestrian bicycle facilities. Traffic data is available in the DSR and is also summarized on pages six and seven of the staff report. For public transportation, three people mover bus routes also intersect the project corridor. Those are Route 40, Route 35, Route 25. Route 40 averages, or is a 15-minute peak frequency with 22 average daily boardings in 2018 at the project corridor. Route 35 has a 30-minute peak frequency with 35 average daily boardings at the project corridor. Route 25 has two stops on A and C Street, it's on A, A Street at West 31st and C Street at West 32nd, and that route has a 15 to 30-minute peak frequency with 148 average daily boardings at A and 31st, and 38 average daily boardings in 2018 at C and 32nd. And Route 40 is a designated frequent route. Routes 35 and 25 are standard routes. People mover bus routes designated as frequent routes are considered high ridership core routes that will influence future transit supportive land use regulations intended to support higher residential and commercial densities. So there's a lot of transit activity on this quarter. Existing zoning, the majority of the corridor is located in the B3 zoning district, which is a high-density commercial district that allows for some integrated residential uses. Most of the remainder of the corridors are within the R3 and R4 zoning districts, two of the higher-density residential zoning districts in Anchorage outside of downtown. Residential densities for new developments in the R3 district are intended to consist of about 15 to 40 dwellings per acre. New developments in the R4 district could approach 100 dwellings per acre. The B3 zoning district is the densest commercial zoning district outside of downtown with unrestricted block coverage and increased allowable heights in midtown. And examples of these, the densities you could see in these zoning districts are represented on page 10 of the report. Looking at future land use in the corridor, the majority of the project is in the city center land use designation, and also contains areas designated as urban residential high and compact mixed residential medium. The project corridor's future land use per the 2040 land use plan designations are roughly consistent with areas of existing zoning. Looking at alternatives, after analyzing several design alternatives and consulting with stakeholders in the public, the project team has chosen preferred alternatives for each segment of the project corridor. More information on those alternatives, on, well, on all the alternatives that were considered can be found on pages 90 to 119 of the DSR. The preferred alternatives themselves are outlined on pages 12 to 14 of the staff report, including cross-sections. The preferred alternatives for each segment improve bicycle and pedestrian accommodations, maintain low speed limits of 20 to 25 miles per hour, design speeds of 25 to 30 miles per hour, and upgrade lighting to conform municipal standards. The routes also work on traffic signalization and vehicle accommodations along the route. By prioritizing the, these elements, the preferred alternatives are consistent with existing uses as well as guiding plans and policies. Notably, it also implement the first raised cycle track facility in Anchorage. Figures 18 and 19 on page 14 of the staff report show a brief example, and these facilities have been used in other winter cities, Missoula and Minneapolis being two examples. For public comments, approximately, well, exactly 2,390 public hearing notices were mailed on April 16th, 2019 for the DSR, and 662 public hearing notices were mailed for the requested variance case. One comment was received from the public, it expressed support for the project as a whole but voiced several concerns, which are available in the supplement, in supplementary packet number one. Notice of the public hearing was posted along the project corridor on April 26th, 2019. For agency comments, no objections were received with requests for variance, case S12479. For the DSR, Anchorage Water and Waste Water Utility, AWU, MOA Project Management and Engineering, MOA Traffic, and MOA Streetlight Maintenance provided design-specific comments on the DSR that the project team will work with commenter, commentators to resolve where necessary. MOA Traffic did note the possible duplication of non-motorized facilities because the draft Spinnard Corridor Plan and the draft Metropolitan Transportation Plan have discussed a possible lane reduction strategy on Benson Boulevard, Northern Lights Boulevard for improved bicycle and pedestrian accommodations. However, the planning department's recent discussions with the Alaska Department of Transportation and public facilities, which owns and operates those roads, Northern Lights and Benson, makes clear that removing any vehicle lanes to provide for improved bicycle facilities or pedestrian facilities along Northern Lights Boulevard and Benson Boulevard is not currently feasible and would require considerable planning, modeling, and investment to become viable even in the long-term, approximately 10-year build scenario. In contrast, the investment proposed in this DSR would provide improved facilities for bicyclists, pedestrians, and motor vehicles in the short term, one to three years, in addition to completing the needed repairs, upgrades, repairs and upgrades to utilities, lighting, and traffic signals. Additionally, the Spinnard Corridor Plan and Metropolitan Transportation Plan referenced by the traffic department are still in draft form and are subject to change. With that being said, the department recommends the following. A, for case S12479, the department recommends approval of the requested variance from AMC 2107060E2B to provide a 10-foot wide pathway on the east side of North Star Street and those sidewalks on both sides of North Star Street. And B, the department recommends approval of the preferred alternatives for each segment identified in the Context Sensual Solutions Design Study Report for the West 32nd Avenue and East 33rd Avenue Upgrades Project. This approval shall only be for the preferred alternatives identified in the design study report, with the exception of the connection between West 30th Avenue and West 32nd, and West 32nd Avenue. The applicant shall resolve the preferred alignment for this segment in particular with the Anchorage Water and Waste Water Utility. Thank you.
Any questions for staff? Commissioner Robinson?
Yeah, do you know, I believe that we're in the process of revisiting our ped and bike plan into a, I can't remember what it's called, the-
Non-motorized plan?
Yeah. So where is that, and even in it, if it's in a draft form, does it identify this route all the way over to 30th as primary routes within that plan?
I'm uncertain of the draft designations for that plan. I know the draft, the plan is still in draft form pending a final submittal from the consultant that's working on it. That's all, all the information I have at this time.
Okay, I just, I, I, maybe we'll hear from the petitioner later. I know we've been long talking about east-west connections in midtown, but it surprised me that it, one got up to 30th Avenue. I guess the other question that I have is, how does this, how does this plan support or propose to get across Arctic Boulevard?
So on Arctic Boulevard, there would be a mid-block crossing. The, it would be, and the applicant can speak to this a little, in a little more detail potentially, but there would be a mid-block crossing island and high visibility crosswalks on both the northbound and southbound lanes of Arctic Boulevard, and that would be, the DSR states that currently there are not many gaps in traffic on Arctic Boulevard during peak hours, so it's, cites difficulties pedestrians have in crossing the entire length in one go. So the, the mid-block refuge would be added so that pedestrians can cross one leg where there's a gap and then proceed and cross the second leg when there's a gap on that second segment.
Okay, and then if I may, final one for now. Where in any of these cross-sections are we proposing to both provide parking for all of this dense development that we're envisioning and store snow?
So I'll let the applicant speak there a little further, but there are shoulders, I believe, on the cross-sections that are intended for some snow storage, and the benefit of a raised cycle facility is that the shoulder, in addition to the two-foot buffer, provides snow storage, and also, you know, that results in there being essentially a 10-foot wide pedestrian facility after the, the buffer there. So that, that would assist with snow storage. The applicant can maybe talk about that a bit more. And as for on-street parking, there's no on-street parking, I believe, recommended in the preferred alternatives, and the development is going up, you know, whether or not they will acquire on-street parking, you know, is not, isn't determined. That could be met through a combination of all-street parking, and there will still be all-street parking allowed on the side streets in the area.
The same 30-foot strip paved side streets that exist as these, as some of these do?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Anderson?
Thanks. Through the chair, I just had a question, a comment from traffic, the traffic engineer said that, why aren't we looking at what the MTP is recommending as a proposed bike lane on Northern Lights? I'm not familiar with what that is, but it seems to be really close, and seems to be another plan that mentions that. Do you have any advice or input on that?
Yeah, so I coordinated with AMAT's, part of the planning department, and they stated that they're, they're not aware of any concrete plans at all for, for that facility to be included in either plan, the Spinnard Corridor Plan or the MTP. And the traffic department, I believe, was, you know, there were discussions at one point that referenced the possibility of incorporating a lane reduction in either Benson Boulevard and, or Northern Lights or both, that would provide for better bicycle and pedestrian facilities on those corridors. And so they, I believe, they raised the issue because they were concerned about the potential for duplication, but in discussing with AMAT's, again, those are not concrete proposals in those plans. Both those plans are in the draft stage, and this is a secondary corridor that would provide improved bicycle, pedestrian, and vehicle accommodations in the very short term, so one to three years, whereas any consideration of major changes in Northern Lights or Benson would, would be a lot further in the future. And it is close by, but, you know, as a, as a bicyclist and somebody who walks frequently in that area, it's not that close, and it's a secondary kind of alternative route that I think would be useful in any situation.
Thank you.
Seeing no one else in the queue, can we hear from the petitioner? And if you could state your name for the record and let us know how much time you'd like to reserve for rebuttal?
Hello, my name is Matt Edge, I'm with CRW Engineering Group. I'm here representing the municipality of Anchorage for this project. As Colin mentioned, this is a project to improve safety for vehicles, for drivers, for pedestrians, for bicyclists across midtown corridor, about 1.7 miles total, to provide a route that will connect Spinnard Road all the way to the Old Seward Highway. Project is, was initiated to help conform to the municipality's Vision Zero goals, to provide safer environment for pedestrians and bicyclists. We've been through an extensive public involvement effort, including vocability audits, bikability audits, four public meetings, presentations, community councils, stakeholder meetings with the municipality and with businesses, over, I'm sorry, many, many, many public involvement events, including pop-up meetings along the corridor to try to get input from people who use a corridor but don't necessarily live along, on the corridor, and overwhelmingly it's been positive response to the, to the project, a high level of support. We've developed our project preferred alternatives to, you know, based on that public input, especially with the bike community really prefers, we were in the DSR, we call them protected bike lanes, they're just, have a vertical separation from the roadway directional traffic for, for bicyclists to go along with the traffic. And, yeah, there's only a few questions we still have, including the routing between 30th Avenue and 32nd Avenue, but generally we have received nothing but positive feedback. So with that, I don't think I have anything else to add to Colin's summary, and I'd leave it open to questions or rebuttal.
Thank you. Commissioner Spinelli?
It, it looks like you proposed to pull the road at the corner of North Star and 32nd. I believe the road currently runs outside of easement on private property, and it looks like your plans propose to resolve that, but I can't really, it's hard to tell with all the-
Yeah, there's a public use easement on, on the property there that the majority of the road will, it covers the majority of the alignment, but there is a little small corner that does go outside that public use easement, so we will correct that with the proposed improvements if North Star is the preferred, ends up being the final route that we utilize for, for the project.
That's all I had. Thank you.
Commissioner Robinson?
So, Matt, if I may, the questions that I asked earlier, in particular about snow storage, so if I'm looking at the preferred alternatives in the staff packet, I'm just, I'm not seeing any place for the community to store snow on these streets, even temporarily. So maybe walk me through how that works.
Temporary, right after a snowfall event, the roads will be plowed, snow will be stored in the shoulders, in the buffer, and in the, and the protected bike lane until such a time as the parks department can come by with their sidewalk clearing, you know, little carts and, and clear the snow from the bike lane. There will still be, you know, based on a standard seven-foot throw for snow from a plow, there will still be, you know, area with a sidewalk for both pedestrians and bicyclists, although, you know, it's not ideal, but temporarily it will have to be in the, in the bike lane, which should be, you know, similar to what would be, what would occur if the on-street bike lane was provided.
So, so, but was, does that ever come, I mean, does that ever come up that we're not really looking, I mean, some of your, some of your alternatives included buffering, which presumably requires overall more right-of-way, I'm not sure, but, but also that, that buffer could, could actually contain some snow for longer periods, because I, I think it's all well and good, but I- Because I think it's all well and good, but I, I mean, I work on Spinnard Road, I, the community doesn't come around, the community doesn't come, you know, the state doesn't come around, we don't, we don't actually clean these things. So wouldn't it be better just to plan the space to put the snow in the first place?
We did a life cycle cost analysis, it's in the design study report, that looked at the, the cost over a 30-year life cycle of acquiring right-of-way for snow storage or hauling snow. And it's less expensive over a 30-year life to haul the snow than to acquire right-of-way. So that was a factor in determining the preferred alternative. So it's provided, I can tell you which section if you-
Yeah, no, that's fascinating. I'm glad you did that. But as a property owner, when I analyze a 30-year time horizon, it's often more cost-effective to actually keep the snow on the site. But I'm just, that's just from where I'm coming from.
Yeah, so we, we did that based on input from both the street maintenance and the traffic department and tried to figure out a, for how many snowfalls on average we're going to get per year, how far they have to haul the snow and the whole nine yards.
And it's even cheaper if you actually just don't even pick it up.
Yeah, there you go. Yeah, if you just leave it in place. I can't speak to that, that's, yeah, that's up to the municipal park.
No, okay, no, thanks for that analysis. Thanks for pointing that out.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yeah, question that, the roundabout at Walmart-
Yes.
As of, when I'm a pedestrian, roundabouts are, like, they're not pedestrian-friendly. Is there any recommendations for making that more pedestrian-friendly or any alternate intersections there?
We looked at several different intersection alternatives, including cutting off, the issue right now is that vehicles turning off of A Street onto Calais Drive there, back up waiting to make a left-hand turn into that Walmart driveway. So we looked at alternatives such as, you know, just cutting off the access to make left turns. We also looked at a double roundabout, single roundabout, and, and then widening the roadway to provide a queuing lane for turning traffic. The roundabout was a preferred alternative from that standpoint. I agree, especially for bicyclists, it's not always the ideal. So just, we separate out the crossings on the side streets as, you know, as far as we can reasonably do without having people just cut through the roundabout and mark them and sign them. But that's about the extent that we can really help improve those. And they are on the side streets which have, the crossings are, which have lower volumes. I think we actually do have one crossing on Calais Drive as well, but we placed that on the far side of the roundabout, which, I mean, on the, so on the east side of the roundabout, to increase sight distance for vehicles. And then the majority of the traffic's coming through there is turning, a high amount of traffic is turning into Walmart, which wouldn't cross that, that marked crossing on Calais Drive. So it was considered for sure.
Mr. Hodges?
Just to briefly comment on the, the snow removal, it, you know, obviously it's a fine line between achieving kind of the usage of this facility for two seasons and for the six months out of the year that there is no snow storage requirements necessary. Having a dedicated spot for snow storage on the street would potentially require widening lanes, which also contributes to, as is well documented, higher vehicle speeds and could negatively impact safety during seasons it doesn't snow. But I just wanted to add that comment into the discussion. Thank you.
And Commissioner Anderson?
Yeah, just one more thing that I thought of. If I remember right, in the, in the report, there was mention of a connection or a future connection towards Lusick Library. I don't-
Anyway, I think that was in there, and I think my comment would be Spinnard reinvestment focus area, which is a few blocks to the south on 36th and Spinnard. It seems like if we're doing a lot of work on pedestrian connectivity to like have that end at a desired employment and housing center would be beneficial to kind of acknowledge that in this plan.
Yeah, that's, yeah, we can, we discuss that. This is well beyond our project scope. There is another project for the, to improve Denali Street that would cross our corridor at 33rd and Denali, that'll extend up past Lusick Library. That's being designed by another consultant, but under the same project management engineering team. So I don't know if that would help with that connection. I know there's also been discussion specifically from Jay Staines, who's a Spinnard Community Council, who prefers another, a different route across Midtown that does go through the Cuddy Park and through the Lusick Library. So with our project, we can definitely add a discussion on it, but I don't think it is probably-
Yeah, I think they are in the process of updating the Spinnard Corridor Plan, right? So maybe it comes into that, that portion, coordinating with that plan.
Yeah, it'd be hard pressed to add it to our project, yeah.
Commissioner Robinson?
Yeah, I think I'd just, I'd just respond that, I mean, that was why I asked for the bike, ped, non-motorized update, because, you know, I got a price tag at $25.5 million for this to create an east-west ped connection. How do, how's that, how do you prioritize that? I mean, that's $3,000 a foot is what we're proposing to build. And I, I mean, until this came out, I mean, I'd only driven 30th Avenue three times and I work in that area, you know what I mean? Like, how is that, how is that? So I think my question, first I have to comment to Mr. Hodges' comment, I was not suggesting that we widened the, the road, I was suggesting that we provide space for, for snow storage from the standpoint of just, just keeping those pedestrian areas open during six months out of the year, which is still a valuable time. So, and I think what I would also say is that the, the demographics section in this report basically just says population. But I think if you were actually to do a demographic report and actually talk about who lives in this area, it would be enlightening. And I, and I actually would like, I don't want to call a section demographics and just say, hey, this many people live there. Demographics to me implies, I'm going to learn about the people that live there, I'm going to learn how they use their local roads, I'm going to learn really what they do, that's not there. And so I sort of take exception to us just building bike paths through neighborhoods rather than understanding who, who actually lives there. My question for you, Matt, is, is why is 30th Avenue, given that it was the last section added, proposed as phase one?
So the, so the 30th Avenue connection to 32nd Avenue, it really, it lacks pedestrian facilities or any kind of connection to Spinnard Road. Once you get to 32nd Avenue, there are existing sidewalks all the way through to Calais Drive, and then on 33rd Avenue, there's no more pedestrian facilities. So this was just the, you know, first phase in order to make some sort of a connection across there. And then the section of 32nd Avenue was, is the last phase because there's already existing sidewalks there. They don't meet ADA requirements, there's no bicycle facilities, although the municipality would like to stripe bike lanes as part of the first phase on 32nd Avenue. And that provides the connectivity halfway across Midtown, and then we can pick up on 33rd Avenue, 34th and Fairbanks and complete that section. So if we do this, the section 30th Avenue to 32nd as phase one, and on phase two, we do 34th Avenue, Fairbanks Street and 33rd Avenue, then we do have a continuous pedestrian corridor all the way across Midtown. And then it's, from there, it's, you know, making the improvements we need to, to make it safer and to provide the bicycle facilities. So it's, it's, that was the-
But I mean, I mean, don't you see, I mean, if we started on the other end, why, why are we now phasing, I mean, because when I go down 30th Avenue, it's, it's, it's a continuous curb cut, it's parking lots, it's, I mean, I, I mean, I get you're going to stripe it and it's going to have a bike, but, but why not start, clearly there was a reason to do the project in the first place, and it didn't start at 30th Avenue.
Our, our project initially started at Arctic Boulevard and extended across to Old Stewart Highway. During the 2017 design study report phase, connectivity on 34th and Fairbanks Street was added to tie into actual pedestrian facilities on Old Stewart Highway. There's no pedestrian facilities between 34th and 33rd. So that was added. And then subsequently, based on public comment, and I, I also think some of it was a comment you made about why aren't we connecting across to Spinnard Road? So that was added. The initial concept was to follow the existing, the current bike plan to go across ADW's property and then down 32nd Avenue. 32nd Avenue is 35 feet of right-of-way with utilities on, on overhead power poles on the south side, and then properties built up right up to the right-of-way line. So in order to really provide pedestrian and bicycle facilities on 32nd Avenue, it's going to either require us to relocate utilities by property or really not provide very good facilities. Also, parking is very heavily used on 32nd.
Yeah.
On 30th, what we found in several different community surveys, we go out there and we mark all the locations of parked cars, there aren't very many parked cars, there's only three or four that are typically there. Most of the parking is off-site on, or on property, off the roadway. And so the opportunity came is, you know, maybe we could utilize that corridor. It also connects to the recently constructed Spinnard Road upgrade pedestrian facilities that are ADA compliant, and they end at 30th Avenue and Spinnard Road. So that was the thought process of using, of upgrading 30th Avenue. We have more right-of-way, although not a lot more, we do have enough that we can provide sidewalks and bike lanes and still provide, you know, 10-foot wide travel lanes on there. So that was our, that was where it came from.
No, no, that's helpful. Madam Chair, just, so, so you just said that the, the parking on 32nd is heavily used. So how do you reconcile that?
We're not, we're not touching 32nd Avenue.
Okay.
So on 30th Avenue, on 32nd Avenue, parking is heavily used between North Star Street and Spinnard Road.
I got you, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So on 32nd Avenue, between Arctic Boulevard and C Street, there's three or four vehicles that are generally on the street. They have adequate parking on side streets to accommodate that, that volume if we eliminate it.
Thanks.
And I see no more questions from commissioners. You have 18 minutes remaining for rebuttal. Are there any other, any members of the public wishing to speak?
My name is Paul Hatcher, H-A-T-C-H-E-R. I'm with Anchorage Water and Waste Water Utility, representing tonight. A couple of different things, so 30th from Arctic to Spinnard would not be plowed, the sidewalks would not be plowed for Commissioner Robinson's question about plowing and snow removal. It's a local road, so it's up to the property owners. That would leave, which is partly AWU, partly Alaska Sausage Factory, and then all the property owners going east to Arctic or to Spinnard. AWU has met with PMNE, with CRW multiple times on different alignments between Arctic and 30th, the connection. Scenario three, if you look in your packet, is the one that would actually keep the pedestrians on Arctic, put the mid-block crossing at 31st. There's two bus stops on Arctic, both in that area, one northbound, one southbound, so for transit connectivity, that actually makes more sense. It would also impact AWU less, it would keep all the pedestrians basically out in the Arctic right-of-way where it's lit, you know, a little bit more secure, a little bit more visible. We do have concerns with the south and the North Star design just for security reasons. Unfortunately, Midtown is, has issues with transient population and security issues, as Commissioner Robinson and Commissioner Spinelli probably know firsthand. AWU, in fact, in the last six months, at the beginning of the year, actually has now in-house an employed armed security guard at our facility due to transient issues and problems during working hours. We also have 24/7 security that, that monitors our site during the night when, and on the Currently, North Star, the 30-foot, this is for the, the vacation or the addition of right-of-way that they're requiring in the S case. Currently, North Star, the 30 feet of right-of-way that is dedicated, was dedicated by AWU, so the additional eight feet that they're asking for is an additional eight feet on top of the 30 we've already dedicated. So that's a 38-foot dedication, basically a right-of-way to make this happen, to make this sidewalk pedestrian happen. Big impacts to our existing landscaping buffer. We realize that with that requirement, we wouldn't have to maintain that landscaping buffer, but we like our landscape buffer between North Star and our parking lot, mainly for just security reasons and just to, because we, about the residential area that's on the other side of North Star. Arctic also currently has existing bike lanes, so as you transition, this would, this would transition you, if you maintain 32nd, as you're heading east, you're in a bike lane, you would transition onto Arctic, either into a bike lane or onto the new path in scenario three, and then transition, get into the turn lane basically as a biker and get onto the bike lanes into, into West 30th, or East, yeah, West 30th. I think that's pretty much it. The, the take or the, the requirement for scenario two, the, the route, would impact AWU substantially. We do use all of our onsite, snow storage is basically in that section and in that area. And currently, that's kind of a concerned area between JCPenney, we have but JCPenney on our south side, and that's where the, the preferred or alternative two path would be, and it's kind of where we store our snow currently during the winter. So AWU would recommend scenario three, mid-block crossing at 31st, trails both on the east and west side of Arctic and basically right where the bus stops are to provide transit capacity as, as staff recommend, and you have Route 35 that goes north and south on Arctic.
Mr. Hodges?
Sorry, I'd just like to briefly note, because I don't think it explicitly mentioned in the staff report, or at least the excerpts that I read, the North Star Street alternative and the Arctic Boulevard alternative, the department considers those both to be viable, robust options, and would provide good facilities for non-motorized traffic. And in Department Recommendation B, it's expressly written in the second paragraph on page 18, that the applicant and AWU will have the flexibility to work out which alternative they prefer.
Commissioner Robinson?
Yeah, but just to be clear, your, your AWU's-
Preferred alternative.
Preferred alternative is along Arctic-
Correct.
Not North Star.
Correct. And that's still taking property from AWU or impacting AWU's property, but it's on the front half of our building, visible to Arctic and people as they go by, as we know the transit. We're really, we're really concerned about the corridor created, kind of secluded as it is, and security and issues like that, and so-
Can you explain to me, so what I don't understand is, and maybe this is more for the petitioner, but, so you go out to 30th and you hit Arctic?
Correct. Thirty, thirty, if you're heading west or east.
You're heading east, you hit Arctic.
Heading east, yep.
Why do you even need this preferred alt, I mean, Arctic is already built, why, why do you need anything along there?
They want, they want an improved, separated path from the existing sidewalk that's already there, that's wide enough and was, was constructed 15 years ago when they improved Arctic.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Hodges?
Again, noting briefly, the department considers both alternatives to be viable, but in the, in the bicycle and pedestrian plan that's on, that's currently approved, there is a recommended facility through the, or a separated pathway through AWU property, I believe. I can be, petitioner can correct me if I'm wrong on that, but I believe that's part of why it's there. Thanks.
Seeing no other questions, commissioners, thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else from the public wishing to speak on this moment? Please state your name and spell it for the record.
Hi, my name is Michelle Wilber, W-I-L-B-E-R. Michelle is normal. Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. So you probably see one of my biases right now. I also have owned a property on 30th, 1008 West 30th, and lived there for 10 years, and then I owned the empty lot next to it, 1010, on West 30th. And as a bicyclist and a mother and a person, you know, my elderly father lives there and he won't be able to drive soon, we've biked everywhere for the last 10 years and walked in the neighborhood. I really like, any of the proposed alternatives are wonderful. I like the, the preferred alternative very much. I like that it goes along 30th, it is the densest street. As you go south, it gets less dense, so there's a whole lot of children, there's a whole lot of people, some of which don't drive cars, that live right there in very dense developments, so they could feed directly onto the amenities on 30th. 32nd itself is, is less densely developed. It's, it's a great alternative, it's a great, it's way too wide, people drive way too fast. It would be great to narrow that down a little bit and to calm traffic. And I think it, you know, the best plans, the best transportation plans often follow the goat trails that people are already using. And I'll tell you, over the last 10 years, I have repeatedly biked down 30th, biked through AWU, so it'd be great if there were paths that connect- if there were paths that connect there, and biked over to 32nd to get across town towards the university and that area. And so that's already one of the better alternatives, and it would be great to make that even safer and better for the people that use that and people that will find that and use that when it's more clear that that's a good way to get across town. So I like the preferred alternative. I like the path along North Star because right now, it's a really kind of narrow and dangerous street, but I walk my dog along it all the time. It'd be great if there was a path, so I wasn't right there in traffic as they zoom around the corner. I like the idea of the path along AWU. I already cut through their parking lot all the time when I'm walking over to the dog park. I love the idea of a protected crossing, because I do the wrong thing and I run across the street in the middle, in the middle between the lights, because it's too long to go both ways. So admitting, you know, the jaywalking I do, it would be great to have that protected and safer for those of us trying to get over to the park right there, especially the kids. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Commissioner Anderson, I think we have a question for you, if you don't mind coming back up.
Yeah. One question, and I also wanted to thank you for sharing your input as somebody that lives in the neighborhood. And the one question would be on North Star, Arctic Boulevard. Since you live there, do you typically see people using directly to Arctic on 30th or taking that North Star?
Well, right now, if you take North Star down, you can't get through. The JCPenney and AWU fences are there. So the path, if north, if you go off of, from Spinnard to 30th, if you then take North Star down, right now, you'd have to turn and go back towards Spinnard, so you'd have to have that pathway through for that to connect back up. Yeah.
Thank you.
I should also mention that I would also love for there to be bike paths and better amenities along Northern Lights and Benson in addition to this, because that's a completely different use. That's to get to the businesses instead of just to safely get across town.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wishing to testify? All right, then the petitioner, I believe, had 18 minutes left.
Some questions that came up with regard to a pathway on Arctic Boulevard and why it is not currently the...
Can you please speak into the mic a little more?
I'm sorry, yeah. So a question came up with regard to ADW's position on the pathway on Arctic Boulevard and why that is not currently the preferred alternative. Number one, there are not bike lanes on Arctic Boulevard. There's shoulders there, but they do not, are not signed striped bike lanes. Number two, the crossing at 30th Avenue at Arctic Boulevard isn't available a lot of times with traffic backing up from the signal at Benson Boulevard. Vehicles back up past 30th Avenue, so they don't provide a clear crossing for people to make a, you know, turn onto 30th Avenue or, you know, from the northbound lane. So that, so then the alternatives we did develop, we moved the mid-block crossing down to 31st Avenue, which separates it from 30th Avenue, which provides more of a buffer from that backed-up traffic. The concern that I have with our Arctic Boulevard pathway stems from the fact that there are existing utility poles or utility lines running on both sides of Arctic Boulevard. They're less than 10 feet away from the back of curb, which requires us to put a pathway beyond the utility poles. And that's part of what Paul mentioned, as far as it would require acquisition of some of the ADW's property in order to place that pathway. When you, some of the more dangerous situations you have with bicyclists on roadways is them coming from the opposite direction that people are expecting when they are parked, waiting for a right-hand turn onto vehicles. So at 32nd and at 30th Avenue, we will have wrong-way bicycle traffic traveling that will need to cross the roadway in order to access facilities on either 30th or 32nd Avenue. People who are parked, if you can envision somebody parked, waiting to turn onto Arctic Boulevard from either location, they're, if they want to turn right, they're looking left and looking for oncoming traffic for a gap. They're not looking right, especially when we have a pathway that comes, you know, from farther away from the curb behind the utility poles. There are some safety concerns with that. Doesn't mean it doesn't happen in Anchorage, all over the place, where we have pathways and people approaching intersections. It's a reality. But our preferred alternative is, in my opinion, the safer alternative, where we have a direct crossing of Arctic Boulevard and we avoid some of those conflicts with vehicles making right-hand turns, but looking left, not expecting a bicyclist to come from the right. So that's, that was why our preferred alternative is developed. Granted, I, you know, we acknowledge that there impacts ADW's property. PMNE didn't want to try to resolve this issue at this Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. We have, you know, we'll follow up with ADW to figure out the specifics, and we'll provide a facility one way or another on one of the two routes. So hopefully, we can all come to an agreement on that. But I don't recall any other specific comments that needed rebuttal. I don't know if anybody else has any questions.
Commissioner Robinson?
So what would it, you show across, we show a cross-section in the report of Arctic Boulevard, just this pathway and a light. Could you explain to me what the west side of the road actually looks like in its totality?
Of Arctic Boulevard?
Yeah, on the Arctic, so you have, you have, I mean, I'm pretty familiar with Arctic. I bike it pretty regularly. So you have a bike lane.
Yep.
Then you have a sidewalk.
You have a shoulder and a sidewalk.
Shoulder, and then you have a sidewalk. Where would the path be? Would it be at...
So we would, if, in order to construct improvements, we would take out the sidewalk.
Okay.
Completely, and route the pathway, we would take out the sidewalk where we install a new pathway. So from 32nd to 31st, it would be on the east side of the roadway. It would impact the park. So it'd be beyond the power poles, those major transmission lines that are along the east side of Arctic Boulevard. So it'd be into the park, and we'd come back out near just south of 31st Avenue, and then we'd have a mid-block crossing there with the same kind of pedestrian island in the middle. And then from there, on the, on the west side of Arctic Boulevard, from 31st to 30th, we would continue that pathway. We'd remove the sidewalk and continue the pathway. And that's where it would affect ADW's property, because there are existing utility poles along that side as well. So we'd have to go past the utility poles onto ADW's property and then tie in at West 30th Avenue. If you can follow that, yeah.
And if, if the cross, if the crossing was at 32nd?
If the crossing was at 32nd, and then follows just one side of, we'd still have the same issue with one-way traffic, but instead of, you know, crossing at 32nd Avenue, you'd have ADW's driveway crossings that we'd have an issue with. One of them is a one-way in, so it's not really a big concern, but there's another one that's a one-way out.
But if you did that, where you went, you crossed over to connect over to North Star, you still, you would still touch Arctic Boulevard at that point?
If we went down the, across ADW's property and down North Star, we would have a mid-block crossing at 32nd Avenue.
Yeah.
Just south of the intersection with a pedestrian refuge island, then we'd cross and follow the southern property line of ADW over to North Star Street.
So you wouldn't touch the rest of Arctic, other than the crossing, you wouldn't touch Arctic?
Correct.
But you would, on 30th, you would still bring the sidewalk out 30th all the way to Arctic?
We don't, I mean, we don't have to. We could end the pedestrian improvements at North Star Street. You know, given the fact that a contractor's there, most likely, we would extend the improvements all the way to Arctic Boulevard. That's a decision for PMNE to make, but right now, all of our, all of our alternatives include a full rebuild of 30th between Spinnard and Arctic.
Yeah, I would suggest that that would be the definition of an incomplete street, if you didn't actually connect it.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, thanks.
Any other?
Seeing no further questions, thank you. And what is the oil of the body? Commissioner Robinson?
I'm going to take the easy one. I'm going to move the request for subdivision variants for sidewalk relief on North Star Street between West 30th Avenue and West 32nd Avenue. This is Case S12479, and move to approve as stated in the staff report.
Second by Commissioner Gardner, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yeah, I'd just say, I think this speaks to both alternatives, so I don't think this really is a reflection on which one it ought to be. This really is just, frankly, I don't understand why it even needs a variance. I think we ought to have road options for when you have 30 feet of right-of-way, which is common all over midtown and Spinnard. And so rather than do this every time, I think we should actually be prototyping what to do when you have 30 feet. If you can add an extra eight, here's what is a reasonable, you know, sort of infill scenario is, because we know we can't ever get to the 50 or 60 feet of right-of-way without really condemning a whole bunch of properties. So for that, I'm supporter of any variance that makes the most of what we have.
And I would just also add that I think in some ways, this is similar to the first case that we had, that perhaps we can start thinking about these in a long-term scale rather than dealing with these case-by-case as they come up. But again, I think we need to start thinking about, if we're going to be encouraging this infill, what kind of infill do we want? And do we want to see some of that prospective stuff ironed out, so every applicant doesn't have to come in for a variance or come in for a conditional use permit?
Seeing no one else wishing to speak to the motion, call for vote. And that motion passes. Moving on to Case 2018-0026, what is the oil of the body? Commissioner Anderson?
In the matter of Case 2018-0026, context-sensitive solutions, Design Center Report, I move to approve as presented, and with the, was there some recommendations? Yeah, with the department recommendations on page 18.
Second by Commissioner Gardner, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yeah, I think as presented, the pedestrian connectivity is a great plan. The alternatives discussed do a good job on doing, providing that pedestrian connectivity. We did hear from AWU's representative that they have some concerns with taking right-of-way and the alignment. I think the discussion we had with Mr. Edge about the safety for pedestrians, that the preferred and presented alternative along North Star Street makes sense to me, and I would support keeping that as is. The one thing that I do want to comment on is, I do think that providing any sort of pedestrian connectivity across town that we can is great. I would like to see, because we have a 2040 land use plan and reinvestment focus areas, you know, I think that these type of improvements should also benefit RFAs with, that are within close proximity to that. And I don't know in the future how that's going to be considered, but I think that, you know, providing the pedestrian connectivity is great, but acknowledging those RFAs is something that we're not doing.
Commissioner Robinson?
Yeah, I want to piggyback what Mr. Anderson's saying, which I think is that, you know, you create a east-west connection in midtown, which I think a lot of people acknowledge is needed. But you also, when you call for high density, you absolutely require that you build an urban street network that supports on-street parking and all of those things. And so I think what, when an effect happens in a scenario like this, when we're silent on what happens with the surrounding local streets, which I think is what Mr. Anderson's referring to, is you basically say that those developments need to carry 100% of the parking. And when you do that, you actually can't create an urban area. So you, in effect, don't have what our comp plan actually calls for. You have a suburban, a nice suburban, safer bike and pedway to get across town, but you've done little to actually contemplate how you would actually urbanize that area. I think that's the challenge that I have. I don't think we're looking at, so when I see the traffic counts that are estimated to be increased because they're based on urbanization, but you're not doing the things that actually create that urbanization, then the traffic counts are a fallacy. So I, I mean, I'm okay with this in the sense that we're creating a needed pedestrian connection because it's needed in midtown, but I don't buy that it's actually because you're going to increase those counts long-term, because I don't think we're looking at what it would actually take to change this part of midtown into a higher-density area.
Any other commissioners wishing to speak to the motion or present findings?
Seeing none, I would just like to point out that we did have a member from the public here testifying today in support of this motion, and it did seem that having bicycle and pedestrian access in this area was very much needed. And call for a vote.
And that motion passes. Thank you all for coming today. Is there a motion? Where are all of my trigger-happy people here? Is there any motion to adjourn by Commissioner Gardner, seconded by Commissioner Strike?